Minutes after nine, we're going to bring our work session, March seventeenth, two thousand and fifty, to order. Please silence or shut off your cell phones if you would. And please join the husband and the pledge allegiance here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you guys know when that pledge was first written?
It's first written?
Yep. After what great war that divided us, and the pledge is something that everybody... So it was written in eighteen eighty-six or sometime like that, after the Civil War. Piece of history.
I didn't know it was that old, but they put some pieces in back in the fifties.
They put in God we trust.
Yeah.
So we do have addition to the agenda under executive session, consider employment. Any other additions or additions at this time? Okay, with that, we'll go on with our agenda, our nine o'clock. I'd like to welcome Connie, Dave, and Eric today. And this is for an update.
Yes.
So I guess with that, I turn it over to you, Connie. You start.
Okay, well, I'm gonna start with asking, we keep down here, I guess, an understanding that you want to talk about...
I can jump in.
Okay.
I talked to Eric.
All right.
And ask for an update, if we could get one on how our hiring practices were going related to the interagency office. Keeping in mind that historically, we had some problems with some of what we thought were interagency level jobs migrating to the west.
Okay.
And had a short chat with Eric about that. And then we thought that with the accelerated restoration program, probably be good for the media to hear an update from the agency on that.
Okay, so I can start out. Eric's got some actual numbers, if you want numbers. First of all, there's no effort to migrate jobs to the west side of the forest at all. Lakeview is still hosting our interagency office. So a lot of our staff, our supervisor, deputy, a lot of our specialists, program specialists for the forest, are in Lakeview. Not all of them, but most of them. There's no effort to move those the other direction. In fact, the ones we've recently filled have been filled.
So maybe just for a little clarification, when you say no effort to, but are we allowing it to happen? We, we had a real issue just because the jobs lost, the damage, the all those things. So all the ones that were headquartered shots, you know, we're saying, we're currently the, the office of record here. Well, that's not going to change. This, this is the headquarters for the forests. So are we actually hiring people and letting them work from Clamath Falls? That's one of the questions.
So, well, I guess I personally say that the forest supervisor and the deputy are always going to be stationed on Lakeview at the headquarters. It's our goal to have our staff officers, which are, we have three staff officers headquartered on Lakeview. Currently, one is in Clamath, but he's in it for a while. Our program specialist, the effort is to fill them. It is an effort to fill them in Lakeview. We do look at individual circumstances such as medical needs and other things where people may need to be working on Clamath Falls and community or spending half their time in Lakeview and half in Clamath Falls. But, you know, the ones we have just advertised recently have all been in Lakeview. So that's our goal. I can't tell you that for certain, we're going to fill every program manager in Lakeview, but that is our goal. But we will consider other hardship issues when filling those positions.
So for some specifics that go along this headline is what Connie was just saying. We've been filling many of our higher level positions here in Lakeview, including some positions that have been vacant for many years. So our forest hydrologist, which is a GS twelve, was just filled here in Lakeview. Our forest botanist, also GS twelve, was filled here in Lakeview. Our forest soil scientist, which has been vacant for years, is currently being flown, that will be filled here in Lakeview. Our forest recreation program manager, which has been vacant for years, duty station will be Lakeview. Two of the staff officers that Connie just mentioned have recently turned over or will be turning over soon. The fire staff, both of those will be filled here in Lakeview. And so that, that's been a very consistent thing throughout.
Commissioner, shall you, you've been doing something to the contrary?
Yeah, that's what I told Eric. So we just wanted the agency to have a chance to come in and explain that you're actually recruiting and filling the jobs here so that we think, you know, we can get that out there to people.
Okay, so that, that is true, but I won't, I won't say that every program manager would be filled in Lakeview. I mean, I just don't want to put on record that we wouldn't consider in Clamath, because we do consider hardship cases. They're usually medical reasons. But other than that, I think what Eric said is true. This is our goal is to fill them here, and I think we've shown we have been doing that.
And one of the things you might have been hearing is we just went through workforce review that we've been going through for three months. And one of the outcomes of that was to allow flexibility and say his own, so our zone for the Lakeview Fly Zone, the southeast, or the south east zone. The winterin zone is that we're giving them some flexibility in how we do the organizational structure that they might be based out of Lakeview, they might be based out of Fly, depending on what that position, best, best for the agency, best for the person.
You have a consideration, so.
But we were just going through that, so that might have led, you know, a little, some of the tails around, hey, we're going to have a choice of duty location, that type of thing.
I heard this, the specifics, I heard, and you don't hear that often, but when you do, it does raise red flags, because once again, what we went through with what appeared to be an attempt to migrate to the west, and we don't feel like the current hierarchy is, has that mindset and understands the importance of the jobs in the community. And this was just an opportunity to have a very open discussion about how that's going so that we could have it on the record that you are actually recruiting for headquarters jobs here in Lakeview and filling them here in Lakeview.
And, and Lakeview has been a central point because it's the SO, Lake County in general, has also been an area of focus of the permanent hires that we made in the last year or so. Over half of those have been in Lake County. And with the workforce review that Dave just mentioned, we've identified many other positions that we need to have filled in order to accomplish the accelerated restoration that you referred to, Commissioner. And many of those, in large part due to the CFLR project here, would also be in Lakeview or Lake County.
Very good. And, and Dave and I briefly touched on it, you know, we don't have anything official, Commissioner Winters has been working on most of the groundwork related to Red Rock Biofuel, we are all aware of them. But, you know, that's going to accelerate the needs of the pre-commercial thing and other non-merchable material for you all.
So what we have done, which I think is why you see some additional jobs being filled that haven't been filled in the past, is, is we are really, really working hard at trying to increase our footprint in accelerated restoration. We're actually pretty successful in moving forward on that. We, in Region Six, we have the highest target, timber target in the region. We also have the most acres treated in terms of accelerated restoration. And that's, you know, we continue to move forward on that, and we're hoping to even increase on that. So, so that's why you're seeing some more additional positions being filled. I think we're a good investment in the region, and that's helping us get the funding to do some of these things. We're looking outside the agency, you know, for partners to help us with this effort. We're also asking for new and different types of tools that we can use to allow us to prepare our, our stewardship contracts and our timber sales in a different way, that's reducing our amount of time that we spend in the field, which is allowing us to actually prepare more acres. So we've got a really, we're really focused on the forest doing that. And in the end, it's not only is it treating, accelerating the treatment of acres, which we're all very concerned about. It should be helping in terms of Red Rock coming in, be able to provide some of that product that they're going to need. And then as well as jobs, so we can continue to accelerate and get some additional partner help.
I don't have the study from Judge Grasty out of Harney County. He talks about it pretty passionately, that when we lose one federal job in Lake County, it really, it actually, our average median income goes down. So if people's duty stations are here, you're going to get full support from this board of commissioners to keep them here and for them to not be working from someplace else. I guess what the public comes to us about is, is if people are traveling back and forth, is the forest service really efficient whenever their duty station's here or the jobs are here? And that's what comes to us for the most part. But what, what I really want is those jobs here myself as part of the commission is that they're important. And with those jobs being here, it starts making the, the face of the forest, type of forest, the forest service even that much more acceptable to the people within our communities. It's built into our relationships, it's built into the community. So, and you probably haven't known all the history, but when Chuck Graham was here, that was basically a promise that was made is that the duty stations and supervisors' offices will be in Lakeview, and we're going to keep those jobs here. So I know that's the past, but the passion carries on. So I guess that's just, I'd want to get that out there, that the average median income is impacted by these higher wage jobs from the federal. Pretty important.
And I think as a result of the workforce review, I don't know if you probably have the current numbers, but I think it's at least four or five positions that we're adding to Lakeview.
Yeah, and I, I don't have specific numbers for how many we're adding, but a study similar to the one that you just mentioned, Commissioner, in regards to the impact of federal jobs upon the county, was one of the key reasons why we made the decision last year to formally consolidate the dispatch center here in Lakeview. And that was a key element in there, that we looked at, you know, the impact of a federal job in Clamath Falls versus one in Lake County. And even though there were some logistical considerations that actually lended towards maybe the Clamath side being a good spot for the consolidated center, and considerations that you just mentioned about the federal impacts on the county carrying the day for consolidating the center here. So that, that's something that, yeah, we definitely recognize.
And we need to once again thank all of you for the support in that, because it was, it was a very contentious issue for multiple years. Long, long before the three of you came, and I think the right decision was made, but more importantly, we thank you for making that decision. The whole group that made that decision, we appreciate it.
Well, it seems to be working very well.
Yes.
Yep.
About that.
Yep.
I'd just like to add, I appreciate all three of you being here, part of our community, and all your staff as a part of the community. I mean, it has an economic effect, but it also has a integrated, intertwined part of our community. I mean, everybody comes here, become part of Serapetus, or Rotary, or baseball club, or Mom's apple pie club, whatever. But having been here, being part of our community is, is big to us. Appreciate it.
Well, I've had a really good year here, so.
And it's been just a walk in the park, isn't it?
But we don't have a park.
Well, I will say, I, I have moved around the country quite a bit, and I will say, Lakeview is probably the most welcoming town. And I've lived in small towns my whole career. And they've all been good towns, but this one has been extremely welcoming, which is...
What's on the plane for the summer?
Well, it's going to snow too much more, so we're looking forward to a busy fire season. We're generally prepared to, obviously, do all the things we need to do. Pretty well-staffed in fire.
Fire hire is well.
Fire hire is commissioned.
But the fire staff position will perform fairly similarly, I understand.
Yeah, we're going to fly that for the clipping. It's our forest fire management office, where Joe Ryan has just accepted position on a national team. He'll still remain in Lakeview.
Is he going to work out of the headquarters office?
I'm not sure, probably. I don't think we've quite figured that out yet.
You don't have him out, I mean, outbuilding yet.
No, but we had done a short form. Actually, I'd love to if he stayed in the office.
Connie, if you don't mind, I was hoping to have just a little bit more discussion on the accelerated restoration program. Only not to go into the full-blown process, but, you know, I think it'd be good for the other two commissioners if they're not aware of it. You know, just some of the new techniques that you're looking at to be able to cut down on layout costs and those types of things. But I'd also like to talk a little bit about fire. I briefly talked to Dave, and I'm fairly involved in the, I'm not the sage grouse guru, that's, that's Commissioner Kestner, but I'm involved in the sage grouse issue related to the secretarial order. And the current plan within one of the chapters, and it's probably the most important one right now, as we look at the fire season, to protect the habitat in the short run and the long run, but the short run. And so I have my antennas up, going to get a whole bunch more information on the first of April when we meet in, the Withlet Committee meets in DC. But the early on signs from folks like Ron Benton from Boise, the director of fire and aviation for the VLM over there, there's going to be a total emphasis on the VLM side of the ledger, on protection of the sage grouse habitat. We're an interagency fire operation. I don't know the details, and I don't want to spread rumors, but it really feels like whoever the fire staff is, this interagency fire staff is going to get a lot of pressure to make that priority one. I don't know, you know, that there's that much wrong with that, other than we've got a million acres of national forest that needs protection too. And I also know that as soon as you start fire season, and actually start to have a few fires, resources become scarce. And you can't just drum them up at this stage of the game. You can't develop highly trained crews, or you can't go find more equipment that doesn't exist, or helicopters that don't exist, or air tankers that don't exist. So for nothing else, because I don't think that they've done a good job, and it's been such a quick turnaround, but really filtering out the general gist of that to the field, because it's going to impact all the agencies potentially. And it, it may be as simple, and, you know, just because you're here is the only reason I want to talk about it. In two weeks, they may clearly say, any extra resources we can find, the VLM is willing to employ them and put them out and stage them on the desert or strategic locations, it's not going to impact on normal interagency operations. But I don't know right now.
So I don't know if I can answer all of that. I know there has been some additional funding that's going to the VLM.
Sixty million.
For fire resources. So you can look at it two ways, you know, where's the priority going to be, or you could look at, that's additional resources for our entire South Central Fire Organization, which includes VLM Forest Service, the state visualized service, and the park service. So we kind of look at that as a benefit. In terms of prioritization, I, you know, we have not had those discussions. I'm hoping that the additional resources are going to help compensate for that. But I, I believe, you know, as an interagency effort, that all of our resources are important. That's why, you know, we have a lot of meetings together where we talk through these issues. We have not really discussed sage grouse much. I don't, I know there's going to be an emphasis, obviously, an emphasis on protecting sage grouse habitat. But I can't tell you that's really going to impact our ability to put resources where we need them. And it will, it will continue to be in a prioritization, and health, and, and, well, you know, safety, health, property, all those things are going to come first, no matter what. And then we look at the resources second. If you want me to move, I probably didn't answer your question exactly the way you...
Well, I just don't think that you've had the meetings to have a discussion with the people that are going to...
We haven't. But that will be in the mix, obviously, once we get past health, safety, and private property, that will be in the mix. In terms of accelerated restoration, what's exciting about that, we do have a ten-year plan and a ten-year strategy on the forest. We've divided the entire forest up into blocks. We prioritize those blocks on a lot of different factors, a big one being crown fire potential, on fire potential. We have decided that we are going to focus our efforts, our planning efforts and our implementation efforts on those big blocks, and try to take some of our other projects off the table, so we're not working on those. So we do have the resources to give them through the planning phases. We have recently just had a meeting with a lot of our stakeholders, some of our neighbors, some organizations that have the same interests. Commissioners were invited, the tribes, to look how we can work together to partner, to use our resources more wisely and double our efforts. So we just recently had that meeting. It's pretty exciting. I think we're moving forward on some things. We have the Good Neighbor Authority that we can be looking at using. We are looking at using, as I said, different tools in how we prep our stewardship contracts and our timber sales that allow us to do things more quickly, which in turn puts more acres on the ground treated. So we're pretty excited about that. I think, you know, a lot of the region is looking to us on the Fremont Way Nima and some of the strategies that we're using and trying to mimic that. So I think, you know, based with the resources I have, the freedom might be given to look outside the box. I think we're, we're doing some pretty good work, for Lake County and Clamath County. So I, I don't, is that pretty much what you were asking?
Yeah, that's a good...
That's our focus, that's one of our key focuses. We also are hiring a recreation program manager, which I'm hoping will help kick off a little bit of a, more of a recreation tourism strategy for both counties. I think that will be important in Lake County.
Well, the sun comes up over Lake County before it does Clamath.
We've centered our whole recreation program based on that. It's really creative what you could do with that.
Have any agency personnel involved in the countywide recreation planning? In the countywide recreation planning that's going on with the University of Oregon? Do we have any agency folks involved in that?
So I just saw a notice come to my house that there's going to be a survey coming around. So I guess that's kind of the first I've really sort of looked into the fact that something's happening. So, yeah, for sure. That, that is my goal, is to actually have a strategy. We have a partnership coordinator now over in Clamath County that can work very closely with our recreation program manager, with our district folks, to work on a recreation strategy, because we know in the forest service, most of our work is going to get done through partnerships or, or concessions or outside sources. You know, we've, we've got limited money to do some of the things we want to do. We know that recreation is also an important economic benefit to both counties. And so I think we really need to be more a part of that. And I'm looking forward to that person coming on board.
But I, I'd really appreciate that, and I just triggered, thank you today, I believe is appropriate, on the restrooms on Porch Mountain. Those are open now. Thank you, people comment on that all the time. I'm not sure who made it happen. I, I've heard recreation dollars are very limited, and I appreciate that you guys are, if you're thinking outside the box or whatever you're doing, you're very, you're, you're right, recreation is important on our forest here and everything. Lots of positive compliments, and I never got into a day with Connie or anybody on that.
It saved lots of seating tickets.
Dave, you must have had a big cup of coffee before you had it over.
No, but that, thank you very much. And that's coming from the citizens, a lot of people appreciate that.
But the collaborative work and the other things, there's a book I read fifteen years ago on networking, that in this day and age, we don't have the money for standalone agencies, we have to network and collaborate. Which brings up MODOC National Forest. They happen to be upwind from us, and fire goes from upwind to downwind. I'm sure you're working with Amanda quite a bit.
Yeah, actually, we've got a spring meeting set up with a couple of forests on the California side and us. We're going to be talking about that cross-border coordination.
Only makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I drive past that state line, I'd be able to see it, it's not there to me.
Yeah.
I think your summer recreation this year is going to be more concentrated on some of your higher lakes and everything with the drought, the desert. A lot of those places being dry, so I think you'll see an impact this year, more people out there, which impacts a lot of things, and fires and everything else. But recreation is becoming more and more, people getting further and further away from the cities, getting further out of the country.
Which brings up mine with this note, fact that we have about the new emphasis on snowmobiles and cross-country skiers. Where's that at?
Okay, so, yeah, I had brought that up a few weeks ago. We haven't really moved too much farther on that. That is part of the travel management rule that came out, it's one of the subparts. And, you know, basically what it's telling us to do is the same thing it told us to do with our roads, is look at where you're going to allow over snow travel, which is primarily for snowmobiles, motorized travel. So we do, we, we plan to continue with our network of snowmobile trails. That's important to us. If there's opportunities to increase that system, and we're able to do it, we can do have this planning process. It will probably, I think the biggest difference is going to be making decisions, are there going to be blocks of land that aren't going to be available for cross-country travel by, you know, primarily snowmobiles, over snow vehicles.
Have you had any complaints come in, come in for the cross-country cow travel on snowmobiles at this time?
I have not heard of any, no. I don't think it's a big issue on this forest. I don't know, once you get over towards the Cascades on the Clamath side, maybe it is. We really haven't delved into that. We're going to get briefed on that a little bit more this morning, actually, at our meeting. But certainly, we're going to bring it into the folds when we actually get into, you know, planning that and making decisions. My goal is to keep things as open as possible, unless there's research reasons to not do that.
So one last question that I have. Besides the timber resource, all the other investments we have out there in the resource, from roads to trails to recreation facilities to signage, I kind of know what the budget is, and it's pathetic. Who, if you were just to say, who might be key in that budget allocation process, who might you say?
Well, I think, you know, regionally, they get an allocation that they look across the region, and they look at priorities in the region, and that's how they allocate resources. We can always apply for grants or special project funding. I think we've been successful in getting some additional funding for Twenty-Eight Road, which we've been trying for quite some time to do. We don't have enough money to do the whole thing. So it's prioritized across the region in terms of, you know, hard money that comes to the forest or our allocation process. Now, if we go for outside funding, that's different. Recreation again, I, I think we have, I think we'll fare better once we get our program manager in place and really can pull together a forest-wide strategy for recreation and tourism. Working closely with the communities on that. I think we can go forward and make a case for what we're trying to do. We just got to get organized behind it.
Well, we don't want to be at cross purposes, Connie, when we're talking to individuals about the needs to what you're working on, what you are strategizing, but our road system, you know, with our, our interagency road department being very small in nature and thousands of miles to maintain both gravel, dirt, as well as chip-sealed roads, the investment we have in all those is, if not the hundreds of millions, billions of dollars, and it's the same way with, on a lesser scale, with our recreation facilities and our signage for those who... We had a meeting, I think I probably told you that before, in Paisley last August, and we had people that came through the woods and ended up in Timbuktu. They were following the signs and, you know, and we know you don't have money. So we want to be a conduit in any way we can to point out to those who make those decisions. Because it's not just about that short segment on Twenty-Eight, it's that whole investment that we actually could save. You know, it was never intended to last forever, but it's obvious with the lack of heavy truck traffic, which might change somewhat, that it, it could last for a lot longer if the agency just had the means to go ahead and continue to repair and, and keep the roads viable. Same way with the signage, same way with the recreation facilities, so.
Well, roads and, and our facilities, and our recreation facilities, you're right, that the funding for that is not very strong. It's, that's the case across the region. Every forest, you know, we've been discussing, and especially recreation roads, how, how do we increase our capabilities? So it's region-wide, and I wouldn't even say it's nationwide. our capabilities? So it's region-wide, and I wouldn't even say it's nationwide, in those two areas. You know, and our, you know, Congress sets our budgets and what we spend our money on. And so once it gets to our region, they're just, they're taking limited dollars and they're prioritizing them across the region. So I can't really give you any more of an answer than that.
No, I think you've answered my question.
I got a topic. If I'm a small landowner and I got a bug kill and I go into harvest, I have to first pay a fee to come across the national forest land.
Road use fees.
Roads, road usage fees. And I know it's from top down, but I appreciate it if you look at any flexibility you could in that. Fees are said to be, to come back to repair roads, but actually, the money goes to the treasury. So it doesn't really come down to our men. But when we had the bug kill going on, and also a very punk fire, that road usage fee was a massive thing to small landowners. I mean, you've got dead trees, you're not hauling a whole lot of baggage, and then the pay will be on top of it. So keep that in mind.
Well, I'll look into that. I'm not familiar with that goes back to the treasury. I've always known road use fees to be put back on roads, so.
No, I was told once by one person, I could be wrong.
Well, I could be too. I know in Wisconsin, they went back on the roads, all those road use fees, especially through timber sales and others. So I'll ask that question.
Like I said, I've been a wrong learner once.
Twice? Oh.
Also, on the Sustainable Forest Action Coalition, it started in California, but it's moving into Oregon also. Now, one of the biggest emphasis that they have is social and economic. I did not say, say socioeconomic, it's social and economic. And the agencies don't have their own sociologists, and they don't have their own economists per se. So a lot of the time that, because it's very dear to us, our society and our local community and our economics. Is there any emphasis to beat that up? I know that SFC may contact on regional foresters on this subject.
So I know that we are utilizing social scientists in our forest plan revision across the region. That's another topic, forest plan revisions. So I know that we have them on board and we have them available. I am going to guess that the social science and the economic piece is going to play heavy into our forest plan revisions. So I think that that's true. I know that one of the top three priorities of our regional forester is public service, and part of that is that economic piece, and that social piece, and how we provide services to our communities, and how we become relevant in what we do. So I think that whole social and economic piece is very much on his mind. I agree, I think we're all kind of foresters by trade, or have the more of the technical backgrounds. But there's a recognition for the need for economists and social scientists in this new round of forest planning. Each forest is going to have one, we just can't afford to, but we certainly can, you know, look across the board and share those skills.
Tip me leary about this one consulting headwaters economics. They heavy on the recreation as opposed to...
Some of the other things here.
I can't help but do my passionate plea of private management. I'm sort of expected that, Connie, but I do believe this travel management rule was designed to allow travel, not to shut down travel. And it's been used to shut down travel on our forest here. So my plea is, is these are public lands. We need to be able to use these public lands. If there isn't resource damage, there's no reason to close them. And so you sit in a position to be able to make those kinds of decisions as they come forward. As I read through the travel management rule, and I still have it, I have a lot of things highlighted. You could even, and I'm talking roads now, not snowmobiles, you could even take in user-created roads. What we ended up with was a total closure of all level-one roads on and on. Now we have the snowmobile. And it's just the start of somebody back east in Washington DC shut down our public lands. And this is a passionate plea from me. I'm very frustrated with it. I believe that those of us that live in these areas, those of us that manage them, we know what we need. We don't need to lock this up from people to be able to use these public lands. If you come to us and you show us where there's resource damage, you're going to get 150% acceptance from us. But if there's not resource damage, we don't need to fix it if it's not broken. And it's a very passionate plea from me on our public lands.
And I'll tack a little bit onto that. On the travel management rule that came out that basically said all forests will look at their road system. This big issue in, like San George on the Dixie National Forest, ATV is just tearing up everything, and other national forests. Here, we don't really have that. But when the direction came down, every forest, you know, reviewed the travel management, my gut intuition was they had to do something so to close level-one roads. And we all know that level-one roads, the forest of Campbell is to be closed afterwards. I mean, it was a convenient way to get that plan, you know, get it repurposed or now. But a lot of those level-ones have, I call it the mom-and-pop little privacy camping areas. And we emphasized heavily at that time, as Commissioner Wang said, if there's resource damage, that cannot be mitigated. But if that level-one is as solid as his table, and it's getting the mom-and-pop that first solitude camping, consider that. Because what the plan came, said, well, within 300 feet or 600 feet of a main interior road you can camp, that's not solitude. So, you know, we look at that travel management that you have, that you inherited, and just see if there's opportunities for solitude camping.
So first I'd say, I'm totally in agreement with keeping the national forest open as possible, whether that's to motorize, non-motorize users, whatever recreation is, or whether it's for commodity consumption, whatever. So, yeah, the travel management rule, you're right, was national mandate that we all got, and we all worked on. We had a pretty quick turnaround time. I wasn't here at the time, but we were doing the same thing in Wisconsin. Had to do some things fairly quickly. Our road inventories were not good. We had a lot of user-created roads that we didn't have any mapping system. So I think every national forest, including Fremont Way Nema, did the best at the time. So that leaves us with where we are now. And we do, it is our policy to open roads that are brought, you know, so there's two different approaches. So we do have in place, if the public or anybody brings us roads that they'd like to see open, we'll evaluate those and make decisions and we can open them up.
And so, well, I think you mentioned that because that was my next question.
But Howard, one of the most, more efficient ways of doing that?
Well, I've put in two amendments. Your website is junk.
Yeah, we're working on the website.
It's terrible. If your most novice person in your office can't get through that website five minutes and do an amendment, the public's not going to do it. And I put this plea out there. I've done two amendments. I've heard zero.
You've submitted two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And anybody can do amendments. But I'm sort of a pretty good gauge. I've only done two. The website, you can't even get on in half the time. You finally get around and you, and I have time enough to mess with it and get there. It's terrible to try to do an amendment. So I appreciate that we can do amendments. Anybody can ask for amendments. The time that you find out about them, you don't even get notified. The website's hard to get to navigate. And we were promised, and I'm still passionate, we were promised, we said in phase one, leave everything open. In phase two, we'll support resource damage and close our roads. We were told, no, we'll close them all, but you can have, do an amendment, we can open them back up.
Okay. So we probably need a more efficient way, an organized way of doing that. I know as we go into these large landscape planning units, we do a roads analysis. I'm looking at Dave so I don't say anything wrong.
No, we are. We are doing travel analysis, and it's road by road with everybody involved. And then come up with what is it?
Well, excuse me, I'm concerned about when we closed all those massive miles of roads that through that process in order to reopen them, the NEPA that would be involved, or the appeals that we'd get. And Connie, you touched on the ship that sailed, so I'm going to touch on it. When you said that they did the best job that they could with the timeframe that they had, and I would take exception to that. We met with them. They didn't do the best job that they could. They took the easiest route by closing them all. And we sat here and talked to them multiple times about the resource damage, the mom-and-pop destinations, all of those things. And said, when, when, when we were presented with it, it was that they did go out and look at the roads, and that's why they knew which ones were there, in order to take them off of the map and close by not being on the map. And we said at that time, well, if you looked at them, why don't we take the handful of roads to start with, phase one, and close those that are doing damage? We're behind you 100%. Then let's take the time over the next year or two years to evaluate any others. That ship has sailed, but just for the record, the job wasn't done well. There was a lot of time spent on it, but it wasn't done well.
So, but one of the opportunities we do have, because I'm with you guys, I don't, I don't like closing off, it's not that we're closing off land for motorized access, it's kind of closing off land in some ways. So these, one, we can do, we can take, we can address it in several means. The one avenue that we're going on, these large planning areas, so right now, East Hills is what, 100,000 acres maybe?
127.
127,000 acres as a planning area that's going through NEPA, public process, accelerated restoration, all those things. Part of that is transportation system. So that's an opportunity for the public to weigh in and look at these roads. And I think we have the ability to open and put on the map several of those. I know even what's on the ground doesn't necessarily match what's on the map. I know that's a problem as well, that we got to get a handle on. It's our goal. I probably haven't made the progress that I know you guys are hoping, but I do think we've got two large landscape projects going right now. One, one over, well, actually Clamath and Lake County, Lobert, and then East Hills. So that's one way we can start systematically, those roads that aren't creating resource damage, with full public input. And I guess, you know, we're going to have to think about, I'm surprised that those amendments are coming through the web. I would anticipate they would come to us directly. Because our web is not, we're working on the website.
If you have a faster, easier process, I probably would love to have that.
Okay, so let's, let us talk about that internally.
Yeah, that would, that would be great. I can't remember who I talked to about, I use the same analogy of your most novice person can get through the website within five minutes. That was three years ago, or something like that, or two years ago when I did the first amendment.
We are working on our website, but we don't right now have the resources related to what we want to do with it. So I wouldn't, I'm not sure that's the right system.
So I may be wrong, Connie, but that's the avenue that I was told to use, was to go through, through the web. So if there's a different avenue, I'm all for it.
We will talk about that. We'll be talking about that today, actually, so.
And I appreciate you guys coming here, taking the beating that we just gave you. Because we do, we do appreciate so many things about our national forest and everything, the jobs that we talked about and those things. So I get very passionate about the travel management.
On the travel management, one of the things that you bump up against as far as opening up roads is number of miles of roads per square mile for different resources, quality of deer, you know, whatever. That's going to be something you bump up against. I mean, you all may know about that. One, my biggest concern back then is to now, is if you have some roads that you think don't need, and so you close it, and that piece of timber out there happened to be 5,000 acres or larger, and that road cannot return to nature, guess where you're going to get yourself stuck in the future. And by all means, group said, you can't go into there because that's caused out of wilderness. That will be used. So keep that in the back of your mind.
Well, the other factor, and I realize that most of these roads haven't been made in 100 acres and probably have to be maintained in the next 100. But there probably are some out there that maybe right now aren't causing resource damage, but, you know, our ability to maintain some of them may be a factor on some of those roads. I realize most of them, I realize they've never been maintained and they're in good shape.
We have one commissioner, as long as you have the chainsaw and a four-wheel drive, you'll maintain it open.
You know, there's so many, we talked so many times, Connie, with those level-one roads left open, there was very little, any maintenance, always going on. The woodcutters and the hunters kept the trees cut out of them for the most part. Initial attack for fires, you guys didn't have to worry about the trees across them, and those types of things. There was a lot of positives about it. There's negatives too. There's places out there that's resource damaging, people were damaging, and we understand that. But if you look at your road atlas, which now you guys don't acknowledge, but you all use, all those level-one roads were listed as roads. And there was a time, whenever those level-one roads were built and quite an investment was done, and maybe a forest supervisor at the time verbally said, that road's worth keeping, there's quite an investment in it, we're not going to rip it up and tear it out, in essence leaving it open. So we heard, they were always closed, technically policy and everything, they're supposed to be obliterated. But somebody made the decision to not do that. Plus, your road atlas has them, and I can show you where it shows them as road, not as a closed road.
Well, technically, under our definition of a level-one road, it is a closed road on the system. So it's been determined, I'm not saying that's how it's handled here necessarily, but a level-one road, we know will need in the future for access reasons. But for whatever reason, it's, we don't feel it's being used by the public, or it's a key public road, and we'll close it. But it's still on our system. We don't take it off our system, we don't unmap it. It can be moved into a level-two road, if we wish to do that, if it's one that has a lot of public interest. Generally, again, I'm speaking from a Midwest bias here, those roads were high maintenance. And so that's why they're closed, but not taken out of the system. If we have a road that's not high maintenance, it's a level-one road, then the question needs to be asked, why is it closed?
I'll give you an example. It came to me this year. It's deer season. The roads get used very low, but then deer season is going to get used. This road, these roads are probably closed. And the people have been chasing these deer, and they come for the second season, they go out there, and the roads have been obliterated. They were probably on a closed road, but they, that caused a lot of anxiety for these two people that were in my office and said, why are they tearing up these roads right during deer season, and on and on. So I don't know. Maybe we need, if you're going to be tearing the roads out and eliminate them completely, maybe some awareness to the people. And maybe just don't do it during deer season.
Well, so probably what we need to come back around to, I know, at least I know in the stewardship unit under CFLR, we have lots of roads scheduled to be decommissioned. I assume those went through a public process, but we could certainly bring those roads back around, make sure that you guys have looked at them.
I don't know. The public's just not very happy with the whole closure of it. So anyway, is it just, I don't know how to, the deer and deer season, even if they're illegally on them, they expect to be on them. So I just gave you an example that came to me last year.
Well, I guess the question comes, if it's a road that's up for decommissioning, it means that we've determined that it's not a road that the public is interested in, or is causing a resource issue, and it's not something we need for access. So then it gets put into a decommission category, so that when we have the available funding, we actually go out and try to take them off the landscape, so to speak.
Yeah, 6,500 miles of those that were level-ones that were ready to be decommissioned by the last travel management.
That was 6,000, some thousand, all of two forests.
Two forests.
Okay, so if they're level-one, they're not, they shouldn't be scheduled to be decommissioned.
Well, I didn't know what road this was, Connie. I'm just giving you an example.
I'll have to look into it, because I'm a little confused, to make sure we're not decommissioning roads that are, haven't been through public processes.
So before you leave, I'm still looking forward to our future road trip. And I hope you had another good walk in the park here at the meet.
A good walk in the park. Of course.
Yeah.
No, I mean, if I can answer questions.
There's nothing easy about your job, Connie. We appreciate you and Eric, Dave, all of those. Yep. There's nothing easy about it. You're dealing with tough issues. So we're here to help in any way.
Just come down and pitch at us.
Yeah.
Okay, so once we're off the record, we'll have to talk about Commissioner Kussner's judging ability with the potato pillow.
Well, we are running a little bit behind. Thank you guys so much. I'm thinking for this, my afternoon. Sheriff Taylor, would you like to come up sort of be up here for a day?
Yes.
Yeah.
Have a good staff meeting.
Oh, no, they're just warmed up.
All right, our next item is at time nine forty-five, Sheriff Taylor, myself, and I believe he's, I know he's talked to other two commissioners. The sheriff has been working on design of his department, looking at possibly bringing Graham on an undersheriff. So we have information on that before us today, just to have a short discussion and possible action tomorrow. So the job description is fully updated at this time. We have coffee to go. Sheriff, I'm gonna give a quick overview. I don't think we've go too far into it unless there's extra questions asked.
Commissioners, thank you for hearing us. I certainly appreciate it. Today I'd like to bring forth the approval and presentation or proposal of the position of undersheriff. I have met with each of you individually and presented my vision of what the organizational structure of the sheriff's office should be. In this document, I outlined the general purpose of what my vision is, the essential functions of the undersheriff. And what the job description entails. I believe we have an imminent need for lines of authority within the sheriff's office. What this does is brings forth a system that measures accountability and productivity to the sheriff's office as well as the deputies. It brings forth a more effective and efficient organizational structure within the agency. My job is, as well as the commissioners, as elected officials, is to bring forth the most effective and efficient way to serve the communities of Lake County as well as the citizens. And my job in particular is to do that with the sheriff's office. And I believe that this is the first step in utilizing and putting that process together. What I'm proposing here is taxing more people with more authority and responsibility. I believe that some of our people in the sheriff's office right now are being underutilized. And I'm not suggesting by any stretch of imagination that we just pile on more responsibilities, but take, you take Lieutenant Hubble for example, from the time that, that I have worked with him and known him. He has an extreme knowledge and well versed in the administrative skills and organizational structure of the sheriff's office. Oftentimes, with our structure that we have right now, you have myself and you have the deputies. When I'm in meetings, my radio's off. I don't have a clue to what's going on out, out in the field with the radio off. And, and I'm able to listen to the radio. Sometimes we're going call to call to call. Oftentimes we're going to emergent calls that I believe is a necessity that we have supervision at these scenes. That we have an overseer that the investigation is being conducted in a proper lawful, ethical and effective manner. And this proposal, I, I think will put this all together. And, and not only I am suggesting that we have an undersheriff position, but this is what I'm asking for right now. But my proposal also contains two corporals within the jail, one working night shift, one working day shift. They will take on some of the responsibilities that Lieutenant Hubble is, has right now. It'll free him up and allow him to do more administrative responsibilities. And then a sergeant in the, in the field to personally supervise investigations, respond to calls, give direction and support to the, the deputies that are investigating these incidents. Basically, that's it in that show. And I would, I certainly appreciate your time and look that you'll consider and hopefully approve this, this proposal. Your time is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
I, I've worked with the sheriff quite closely on this. I have no questions at this time with the sheriff. I've been supportive and report with this tomorrow in our regular board meeting. So if you guys have any questions other than part of you.
I totally agree that it need be a chain of command, let's put it that way. I mean, you have it in the military, you have it privately in a courthouse, any organization. And it gives them leadership out in the field. That's where it's hand preparation facility. That gets good.
I will. I look forward to the list tomorrow in my regular board meeting. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I, I was looking at you. I didn't know what you had going track. I knew we was gonna run over our last meeting. I've, I've tried to get that nod of you're doing okay. Thank you, Sheriff.
Have a great day.
Thank you very much.
Be safe out there.
I will. So moving on down the agenda, Roadmaster just came in.
Yeah.
I would be in earlier, but I've had him back.
Did they take all your money or whatever? Is that down?
He was oil companies and it was a good chance to visit with them.
Okay, well, our next item is oil bid recommendation. And Rick, I don't know if there's anything you can or want to talk about today. Or this will be just with legal counsel here tomorrow.
Well, you guys got a copy of the quotes. And this is our oil bid that we use every summer for chip sealing and paving. And we put this out for quote every spring. And there were three quoters, Idaho Asphalt, Albina and Western Emulsions out of White City. They're a new company. And they, with the ton this, chip seal oil, there are only a six dollars difference between the price. Closest bid I ever seen. And probably because of the CMS two S, that's what we pay with. It's a different oil than the chip seal oil. Will, will go with Idaho Asphalt. That's my recommendation because they have a proven product. And you gotta remember the capabilities of the oil that if you're paving with the same oil coming from the same plant, they're gonna marry better when they put chip seal on that same product. And you always get, gotta keep that in mind. Some people will have an oil that's anionic or canonic, can be, one will be negative, one will be positive. So tomorrow I'll come back up here with Mr. Bailey and I think that he needs to give some encouragement about this. But I've talked to Albina this morning and they perfectly understand and about the CMS two S, they can't perform it. And they can't, couldn't get it. They just said if they were to say things at thirty or fifty thousand to the taxpayers, that you probably have to look at us then, you know, then they would come and kind of test it. There's not enough difference. And he was really gracious to say that something went wrong with Idaho and they would honor that price. And they'll never, ever hear him say that, that's the same price if I need more. So that, I was pretty tickled about that. And then Western, talking to him, we're gonna, we email back and forth, but we're gonna talk tomorrow. And this company, I will invite them to bring their product, to try it on some project I'm on. And see if it's a proven product and test it. And I think they're okay with that. They know that that's kind of.
It's such an investment. It has to be a proven product.
Oh, yeah. You can't, and you know, even with Idaho Asphalt, a proven product, it's the cutter that they have to put into the crew to make it flexible to lay out. And all of them will try to give you less cutter, cause that's their cost is jet fuel. And I have to like truckload the very first project and just do a small amount. Cause I've ordered three trucks in a row like a regular day and all three of them been bad and they're, well, let's see if you can do this, do that, oh, we hate bringing back. They're in your tank already. They're contaminated. Even the proven product people, you have to, you have to go light at the very beginning, cause you don't know what's gonna happen. So anyway, that's, that's what's gonna be my recommendation tomorrow on, on the oil. And then Mr. Bailey, he can, I think we're fighting, I think all the owners are fighting with this decision we'll make.
So Rick, under the bids for the CMS two S, we had two bids, Idaho Asphalt and this Western. And how, how much product are we talking about?
That one's, it's gonna be four hundred ton. So you'd be fifty bucks times your four hundred difference. But the problem with Idaho, they're really ouchy over there. And if I went to save that fifty dollars, and if the product didn't work at Western, I wouldn't be able to get Idaho back. So I mean, they, and that's why I like to talk to these old companies when I make a decision like this, that I never would have burned a bridge. There's only, you see, there's only three amount there that serves. What's the math on it? What's fifty times four hundred? Twenty thousand. CRS two B there, just right there, there's a million dollars there.
And you'll be in the meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did have an addition, but I, I wasn't sure if you're on time schedule, going away or not.
We're good. It is. We have a one o'clock for Sheriff. And the addition for, I'm not even forgetting. Equipment shed quotes.
We've been working on this all winter. And when we lost the incubator building, we lost quite a bit of our storage. So anyway, we, we have four quotes here. And it's in the budget and our capital improvement. And it's, it's under forty, fifty thousand. So it wouldn't be after registered as a capital improvement project. And this building is, I sent one to Jim Bailey too. I'll give you the, the size of it. It's sixty by eighty-four and fifteen at the top. So it will have six large bays and one to be able to put our screen in. That's sitting out there. That's a very important item. Needs to be covered. It has a lot of belts. And it's, it's mostly for just big iron. It's that the sun's eating on, you know, the tires and, and whereabouts. This doesn't have to be now, where you, I sprung it on you.
Yeah, we got the deer in the headlights. Look here, you can tell. Well, Rick, I've never tracked completely on capital and I don't know how big a difference that would make. But I, I guess I was under the understanding that five thousand and over, if it was permanent nature, was a capital project.
Well, it is. But I don't have to put in for a, it's under fifty, the public. Yeah, we're over, we're over the capital. But it's coming out of my, its budget is this year.
So you're able to go with quotes instead of our fee because of it's under the.
Yeah. I'm not sure. I don't know, seventy-five on sale, sale bids. Anyway, when you guys wanna digest on that, we'll talk about it tomorrow for a minute. I mean, that sleeps on that for a while. And, and the only reason I, I put it in there is cause the prices on these are not gonna hold for any weeks because of the materials.
So Commissioner Lee, would you like to add this as possible action consideration tomorrow or? Please add that Denise. That's, that's as bad as what we did with forest supervisor, isn't it?
If you give me incubator, one of the bays, I, I wouldn't have to buy it.
We're real willing to rent them anytime, Rick, for that range of price. You have anything else to spring on us, Rick?
No, I've been, I've got enough surprises from you guys for a while.
Okay.
Enough for my lifetime.
All right.
So I got it. Yes, morning.
Okay, so we're gonna move on down the agenda. We have Tom and Dave here. We have emergency hangar door replacement airport. I wasn't aware of this at all until I was going through my thing. So I may have all kinds of questions.
Okay.
It is. Thank you to everyone.
So you wanna, do you have anything on the emergency side? Explain the verse or is that something different? Okay, all right. So what we had is the back door, there's a three sliding door in the back of the hangars. The center door is falling off the rail twice. And there's just one small pin holding that even falling onto the aircraft. We.
Put two pins on.
Put two pins on, yeah. So, but what it is, is that upper rail is starting to, I think it's sagging at one end and it's lifting at the other. And what's happening, as soon as you open that door, it pulls it out of the track on top. And just leaves that big old two ton door just ready to fall. I'm more concerned about somebody having their back to it, you know, hard wind gust or something hitting that thing and just, you know, crushing somebody. Even though it's a, it's an expense of anything sitting underneath it, just dehuman life factors or safety factor that I'm concerned about. So what I was requesting to do was rather than replace the ceiling that we had already had set money aside for, that we, we take that money and we transfer that to, to a door installation. And that's kind of what I'm proposing. And it looks like you guys have got the bid there that, two of the bids are pretty close, but I think you guys got the, the one that was the least amount. And the company will come in themselves and install the door for that price. Whereas the other two, it's questionable. You get the door built and then you have to find a contract to build it. And so we're up to another eight, ten thousand dollars for the install. Hydro swing puts twenty-one thousand, six hundred for the whole door. The only question there at all is if the side structure needs any reinforcement, then they would charge extra to, to reinforce the uprights going up beside the door. And I have not gotten answer back from their engineer on that as far as what, what the cost would be. So I tried to, I got with Dan and we tried to make it, set, set it to where we figured twenty-six thousand. That gives us an extra, what, thirty-four hundred bucks? No. More than that, forty. So that gives us just over four thousand for any, any kind of, you know, repair or extra strength that would be needed there. And to hope that that would, would do the case. So we'll do the whole, whole system.
Now, is this a tilted door?
It's pretty much identical to the same as the front. Yeah.
Well, and we talked about it, Tom. And you know, the first shot when the doors came off and they were treacherous and tried to repair them, it's obvious that long-term they need replaced. But short-term they became a real hazard. So for the board's consideration, we talked briefly about, you know, the monies that were designated for other improvements that could be proven to look at those dollars for this year. this year, and then you have them resubmit for next year's budget on the difference of the ceiling.
Where were you at on the ceiling?
I was still trying to get three bids on the ceiling, so, so we were.
We're in march of the budget, and we're just trying to be spending, so.
Well, yeah.
I'm one that projects need to be ready to go whenever we give money on open request, so I'm, I'm business immediately, and you, the other one, it's a year or so.
It's not, yeah.
Three quarters over. What does your budget look like? What amount do you have in the budget?
We do need to do, uh, we probably need to do resolution time we're down with the projects that we, that we have in the process, as far as fencing and office space. I talked to Dan this morning, and.
But on your revenue and your expense for that budget itself, is there any money other than going to, um, the general fund, all of those being contributed for the roof? Is the budget in red and the black?
Oh, no, we're still, we're still above everything, but if, if we was to do this to finish all of our project, we probably need to.
Yeah, if, if we need to dip into that forty-four hundred dollars to do the, any extra structural work, then it's gonna start putting this right on the edge of that budget, so if they can really do what the quote says, and all the, all the structure meets that, then, then we'll, we'll be ahead still, so we're gonna be right, right on the line there with it.
The other one had to have brand-new timbers and everything put in to build withstand the engineering and everything of a door, this, I, I would assume that this one would be the same.
Yeah.
I wouldn't even go into this thinking that the nineteen forty structure would be able to sustain the weight of the way that these open compared to a slider door.
Right.
So I, I think you're going to see added cost.
Yeah, and, and we thought the same thing, I mean, we, we talked, it was, around, same thing as you're on, you know?
And you have an idea that you think those added costs would be within four thousand dollars, is that what I heard?
Yeah.
How soon are we gonna be able to firm that up?
Um, I'll try calling again today, beginning, trying to get an answer, because it was last week, first of last week, they've been kinda slow to return calls, and I've had to call a couple times, so, but yeah, I'll try again today and see if I can get them to give some, an exact on that.
Okay. I did notice, oh, I'm just, uh, on this particular quote, twenty-one six, I noticed right down below the grand total, it says deposit ten-eight on dispatch ten-eight. What does that really mean?
So it's fifty percent down?
If we were to award it to fifty percent down, but then on dispatch, the other fifty percent.
Right.
What, what does on dispatch mean, do you know?
I'll have to ask them, I'm assuming that as soon as the thing is shipped and the crew is on their way to, to install the door, they would request that.
It usually holds them back, so then you can do your punch list to make sure that it's done.
Yeah, I think we need to get that.
Okay, so I'll get that clarified?
Yeah, I mean, buying the materials or paying for the materials upfront, I can see that, but the workmanship requirements, they.
Yeah.
That would encourage them to come in, get it done, get it done right, and then sign off on it.
Okay.
And I, I guess I would apologize to my fellow commissioners, I don't, I didn't hear anything from Commissioner Kessler, I thought you guys were aware of this door.
I wasn't, but that's, that's all right.
I should've given you an update.
The, the other thing I like to see, especially with this, is put a timeframe for them to finish by. And, I mean, you could be led on forever. My other question is, is you're putting this out as an emergency, so what are you doing right now there, that you've come to public media and said this is life and health danger? What are you doing to shut that down so that nobody gets hurt or nothing gets damaged?
Yeah, the door's just being pinned and not used.
Just, you've got it secured because of, like, you don't want anybody to get hurt or nothing get damaged, so it needs to be secured.
And the aircraft that are back there have been moved forward, so that there's nothing, you know, there's, there's no public, you know, that can head into the building, so.
Do we have it somewhat flagged off or something, just?
I can, I can put some, uh.
A safety measure?
Yeah, I've got some caution tape and stuff out there, I can put it all.
I think it'd be good to do that, just because we are concerned, and we don't have it on tomorrow's agenda, and it is an emergency, but I think if, maybe you could work with Denise, rather than put it on there right now, Denise, if you get some information back today to conclude some of these questions, I think we'd like to hear from you tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. Denise, back here tomorrow?
Yeah, well, we'll wait to hear from, Denise will wait to hear from you if you've got something more to.
Right, okay, yeah, you're right, okay.
Okay, and as far as we focusing the, uh, the biolum to the lobby or anything, what's established on that?
Well, I've got, I've got all the materials there, and it's been a slow shot, but I'm hoping within the next two, three weeks, I'll get that finished up, so we've got time opening up now to where we can really get on it and get it done before the season starts, so.
Do you have any for seeing use of the upstairs, upstairs part?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're actually gonna take the office space that we've been using down below, and it's gonna get moved upstairs, so that the actual county office portion will be up now, the way in the.
The lounge.
The lounge area, yeah.
So Tom, uh, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, since we're here and we're talking about that, we've got a couple of other new developments. Joe sent me a text yesterday and said he'd got ahold of you. So you wanna give the other two kind of a quick update, because we were talking about this old sage grouse protection issue, and it gets with our airport and all the other stuff going on.
Yeah, yeah, Joe and I talked yesterday, that what they're wanting to do is they're wanting to supply extra fuel storage here in Burns, uh, to, uh, to support any extra aircraft for fire suppression for the sage grouse habitat. So, um, what Joe and I talked about was the amount of gallons that we would need for storage, and that storage, um, I told them if we're gonna double the amount of aircraft that are here, we need to have probably thirty-five to forty thousand gallons worth of storage instead of twelve. He said Burns has requested fifty thousand, so more than likely, that's what's gonna be submitted, is fifty thousand gallons of fuel capacity here and at Burns. And, um, I should know by Friday, uh, from Boise Forest Service.
BLM.
Or BLM, oh, I thought it was a joint deal there, but it is just BLM, okay. So they're gonna be getting ahold of me, he said by Friday, and setting up the exact coordination on that and, and what we're gonna be getting, and, uh, and how soon. He's hoping we can get it done before fire season starts, and he was requi, he was asking whether or not we needed to remove the fuel tank that we had here, and I said, no, I, you know, we're, we're set up with this, all we need to do is plumb in, if they bring in another large tank, it needs to be plumbed in to where it'll just flow through the pump that we already have, so, so that, you know, it's not a huge investment that's gonna separate the electrical and all that kinda stuff.
And the BLM will be standing those costs for the hauling it over, setting it up, making it operational. Joe we speak of for, for everybody's identification is Joe Stettler, in the agency that's looking at this as the national office of the BLM, out of, out of Boise.
Out of Boise.
Yeah, so, and then we will, we will receive the fuel sales through our county airport.
So it's sufficient room, and will they pay for all the certifications and the inspections and everything of the tank and the plumbing and all of that?
Well, that's the, that's what we have to clarify with, uh, with Boise office, and if, when they get ahold of us, Joe said he was the go-between guy, wanted to make sure that it was something that we didn't say always a bad idea, and from that point, he's gonna hand it off, because then we're gonna get all the details worked out.
Be a great thing, yeah. Be a good thing.
Yeah, it'd be really good, because that would really support.
And Tom, as, as you talk to, whether it's Joe or Ron Dutton or his assistant that's taking care of this project, we need, as we talked the other day, some additional clarification that this isn't just this season's fuel tank storage capability, this should be ongoing, and we just need to have that clarified, that that tank will remain here.
Yeah, it's not something we're just gonna remove, we could, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay.
Thanks.
Nope. Please, you got you in the chair, we might as well get rid of you, Mr. Bourbon, courthouse office space requests for proposals.
Put an IFP together, uh, for a contractor to come in and, uh, to, uh, construct, uh, office space in the old library, and exit stairs out the old library. I, uh, so just to go up for our piece, so we can, uh, start moving forward on our, our remodel office space.
For the second, the audience, and I say, can you give a little brief on what that realignment of office space coming to town?
Far as where people are going, or just office space themselves?
Kind of the general concept of who's moving over there, and we shift in here, but constantly get questions from the public.
Well, we're looking at the old library, uh, putting in, uh, uh, office space, uh, better meeting rooms, more to, for more efficient use of the courthouse for the public to come in and utilize the courthouse. We're looking at, uh, putting the, uh, board, boardroom over there, the commissioners, this boardroom, the commissioners, over there, and, uh, other, other, in your other business, that you guys feel that needs to be over there, it's time when we build the space for it to be there, if that's the place, because I can't really identify to T what's gonna be over there, you know?
It changes daily.
Right, it changes, so, uh, so we're, uh, put commissioners in, there'll be a restroom over there, uh, so just mainly just commissioners and, uh.
Well, David, just to help you out there a little bit, because we've talked about this a great deal, the commissioners, Denise, probably you, there will be office spaces that will be set up, that can be multipurpose type rooms, until some of those decisions are made, because some of it's just not going to resonate, though it's actually being constructed or it's constructed, but it's, it's being designed so that we're not locking ourselves into this or that, we'll have options.
Right.
Basically, please, for the audience, the commissioners and related staff will move out of this area, free enough this space for the assessor to come down to here to be closer to clerk's office, and that brings up the assessor's office for probation to be moved into theirs office to be closer to the sheriff's office.
Correct. Get some synergies. Dave, we've talked some over the past, I, I'm looking at project overview, and it says Lake County desires a contractor to construct office space in it and exit stairs by the specs that Lake County provides where the old library was located, the Lake County courthouse. Is this a complete plan, and do you have the specs for everything?
Yes.
Because if we're, we're just looking at this, I mean, is it inclusive of IT, is it inclusive of everything, so that we don't end up with.
It's not inclusive.
Walls built and then have to go back and wire later?
Well, that's where I put it, down below, I did put, because we don't, as IT, we don't know, this is a different, the contractor has to work with IT, where they want their IT staff as we build, and I did put down here on the proposal down below, that we'll need to work with IT manager as we build and identify IT, uh, components need to be installed. Now, the electrical and the, uh, the electrical and all that, yes, that is in the plans that I have, the IT side, no, it wasn't, that wasn't part of the plans that I had built at the time, because we just need to work close with IT.
Okay.
Mr. Brown will do his first walk-through of the library tomorrow, so he'll have a better idea on that.
To address what you're talking about, Commissioner, because that's, we've talked a great length on that, that we get a contractor, whoever that might be, and they're awarded the contract, they have to have a clear understanding as they start construction, at what phase does IT wanna come in and put in all of the wiring, so we don't have the whole sheet rocked on, or we have a contractor sitting there saying, you're holding up my progress, so that they have full knowledge that there's going to be another phase, it's not in that contract that they have to account for, as well as the work hours, you know, as far as working around noise disruptions and so on and so forth.
Would you say, uh, would we just experience some buildings in the past that were said were completed, and we would end up with other costs? You're comfortable with you have all the cost pretty much, or the gonna be cost figured out from carpet to the ceiling?
Well, I hope today to be able to read this thoroughly for tomorrow.
Well, I think you better read the spec plans thoroughly, this is pretty generic, it refers to the spec plan, and that's where the cost will be.
In the spec plans, Dave's been working with our building official on that, because that kinda stuff's great to me, it's only a builder that could, could see things.
You have to sustain us, just stay tuned, stay involved, walk him.
Well, we're, we're the ones that approve the budget, the cost for what it's gonna be, and the spec plans will dictate what the costs are gonna be, but I mean, that's, that's just the way it is.
Yeah.
Time is money, whenever you have contractors in the equipment and, and the boards and nails and time costs dollars. So you're looking for approval of this tomorrow?
Yeah, yes.
And, um, so your spec plans are the plans that was approved by the board?
Yes.
And that has all your specs in it for?
Yes.
So whoever bids will bid entirely from those spec plans?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to look at those again, so.
Yeah. That would be good.
It's Ken's decision tomorrow, because she's not gonna be here.
Yes.
Do we have an estimated time of completion? Or is that the sixty-four thousand dollar cost?
No, we haven't asked him yet.
I was like, how does it completed by two thousand seventeen, so. Whoa. But with the phases that we have to do it in.
Oh, you're talking about the whole building?
Yes.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha. I thought the, like, bird, two years ago.
Bring us back.
Yeah, I was, I was just referencing the library.
Bring us back to the RFP, is, what date will the contractor have to be, have us built to spec by, what's the date you're looking for? Is it gonna start in this budget year, is it gonna start the next budget year?
I'm hoping it starts in this budget year.
Okay, and so you believe that there's enough dollars there to do this, or are you gonna be looking at budget time to add more dollars for next year?
My budget time will have to add more dollars.
So if it goes out to bid and we approve it, we're approving expenditures for next year? That's for tomorrow? Damn, damn, please, thank you, I can, I can.
You know, I just, I'm just.
Okay, we'll, we'll, uh, look at it. Any information that Commissioner Walt will get with Dave, we'll clean now and tomorrow, if we decide to take action tomorrow. All right, anything else you have, Dave?
No, that's all I have, I gotta go do some more research.
Okay.
Dave? When is the RFP for the runway at the airport, when's that coming open? Actually, it's, it's out. Okay, so when's it due? I have to look at it, program seems to be accurate, so it's time of day. I'll get it to you. I mean, I don't need to know, but it's gonna make. We're, we're doing, uh. Who I'm gonna give, who's gonna be? Well, we're actually doing an open bid on Thursday.
Look, we're gonna take a ten-minute break, we'll come in order till Thursday.
Oh, that's good. So you'll have bids back Thursday then, or?
Well, the bid opening, it's eighteen minutes to eleven, we're gonna cut back in session, and we have Jay in front of us, so we're gonna move to, like, an official conversation with you for the member recommendations for tomorrow.
So it is that time of year again, I hope to get this committee together, I hope to get them their materials tomorrow afternoon, so they can have a couple weeks to, um, digest and, and work on it, and I hope to get them together the week of the, the first or second week of.
And I hope to get them together the week of the, the first or second week of April and have a recommendation by the end of that, that second week. I'm recommending that you appoint Melissa Chaney to the board. Made name Rich, I don't know if you know her, but they have a place on West Side and they are leasing the greenhouse in Upper Town and intend to grow fresh vegetables throughout the year. I thought that was a good idea. I checked with the, all of the elected officials just to see if, you know, if they knew of any conflicts of interest or it seems like this person just really wants to serve the community.
Very good. Just for the audience, can I say what this conversation with you board is, is charged?
Yeah, ORS requires us to, to have a committee review elected official salaries each year and make a recommendation to the board, to the board commissioners or the budget committee. So this, this, this committee, this elected official compensation review board will get the annual salary survey that all counties participate in. They'll get instructions, what they're supposed to do by ORS, a description of our organization here, where our commissioners are organized and how that differs from all other counties. And they'll also get the, the salary study that we performed about a year and a half ago for all of our managers, which included the elected officials. So they have a lot of materials to review and they can make any recommendation they want. It's not, the idea is that they're not going to be influenced by anything that we have to say. It's an independent review.
Well, and Jay, the thing I appreciate so much is that compared to like counties, there's boards of commissioners, there's home rule, there's judge. And same goes for our other elected officials. Some are other counties, they're parts and others are appointed, not elected. So this is all about elected positions that structure that we operate under on our territory.
Right. It's really complicated because the demographics are so different in the valley and in the eastern and southern part of the county that, you know, and then we have some, some added on duties like tax collection, budget officer, you know, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors for them to, to consider.
So we'll...
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darwin?
Hi.
I'm going to jump to you.
Thank you.
And you've been waiting, we're going to the land sale.
Okay, land sale, I've got agenda summary before you. That's an order for sale of county properties from prior years. So I summarized that list on attachment B, which is properties that are in the best interest of the county to sell. And because we already have a June 1st sale date and the date I'm bringing this list to you, it makes most sense to have that sale, both of these together. Both attachment A that was from before, which were the last years, and then this list, which extends as far back as the 80s, some of these properties. So I hope you all had the time to look at them and...
Yeah, I went through the list all thoroughly myself. Darwin, I had a lot of discussion. The first sheet we had had some darker orange highlighted and all those but one came off to the sell. They, they were lands, rock pits and other things of the county ownership. These other ones, the only one I asked was for you to check on the one on the north end of the Lakeview area. You have papers right there.
Yeah, I've got a couple of pictures of those. 13221 is one of those on this list. Let me tell you which number that one was, that's the 217. And it's a narrow strip, this is very difficult to see. And I only bring it just to show you that it's a strip of land in between two properties. And there's kind of no reason to not sell it. You know, you had a question if it's a power easement or something like that. It doesn't appear to be. It was a deed of property that we, it's not owned by the power company. There is an easement that is found, it still exists. And it'd be up to the purchaser to continue to look into that, as it would for any of these properties, for reasons that might exist on them. So a lot of these properties, you know, they're, on attachment B, I did include the language, a summary of the language that's found in ORS 275.25 or 225, which is if it's less than 15,000 valued on the assessor's rules and unsuited for the construction or placement of dwelling, then you can do a private sale. We've entertained that a few different times. And this property that I just mentioned would be a prime.
That's a property for there's residents on each side of it.
So by having this list out there, at least it makes those property owners aware of it as well. And certainly we can make them a little more aware of it and we'll probably get to do that. And it's highly unlikely that anyone's going to get in and try to buy something of that size. So at least this makes it available upfront to the public that some of these properties are more readily available.
Just for clarification on the site here, so the null, that normally I thought meant like a road or a right of way or railroad track?
Yeah.
Why do you say?
So null also just means there's no value for it. It's a zero value in the table. So there is no addresses for the majority of these properties. There's four properties that have at least one address and duplex with the house that's just south of Lakeview Lockers is one of these properties. And that has three addresses on it.
Getting it cleaned up?
Yep, getting it cleaned up. So there's pretty good value there in the background, in those tax and districts and some to the general fund.
Hey, the other thing we have for you, unless there's any questions on that?
No.
Road naming, Oster Farm Lane recommendation. I have to apologize, I wasn't at the hearing. This is not a hearing, this was a continuation, make a decision. Am I correct on that? Okay.
So the hearing was closed in Christmas Valley. It was continued to Christmas Valley originally from the meeting we had on February 14th here at the county in this room. And there was directive at that meeting for me to get in contact again with the Oster family and to make sure that what they wanted that road, which was the northernmost of the three that are in question under that hearing. After discussion with them that day, it was decided that they would like that to be called Oster Farm Lane and as it continues from Fossil Lake East until you reach the Bitterland property. So any address that would come up there will be reassigned with your approval of that road name. And it's certainly my recommendation to go with Oster Farm Lane. That's historically what law out there has felt that it was called. Todd Gregor was also one that thought it was already named that, so above seeing.
Okay, so we'll act on that tomorrow?
Yep.
So Darwin?
Yes, he got one.
Georgia?
Your very lunch.
Yeah.
Hi, Georgia.
Hi, I'm having a hot seat.
You're in the hot seat. Can we add a whole packet here? Please explain.
Well, we're trying to clean up now. Non-mobile homes and old ones that are...
Yeah.
Which one do you have?
First?
The abandonment one or the one that starts out with...
The link with taxes is the first one in the matter of cancellation of the tax. Which one do you want?
One of them is an abandonment. It has just one page for the exhibit A. We'll go ahead and start with that. That was Zainer and Billy Richmond. Mr. Zainer passed away. Vince Perez bought the property. And he has gone through the abandonment procedure and I have attached all of the abandonment certificates and everything to that document that he submitted to us. And so we need to wipe out the taxes for those three years that they didn't pay because he had passed away and Mr. Zainer did. And the total impact on that is 50117 lost to the districts for 2012, 2013, and 2014. Then in the other packet, there are several many function structures. A lot of them were on, were dealing inventory, should have never been put on the tax roll. And a lot of them are destroyed. These are old, old mobile homes, you can tell, and the taxes are $1.49 a year. That, that tells you something. The total financial impact for all of those years is 2012442. Yep, the districts, well, they're not going to give it anyway, so just write it off. So that's what that is. We're just trying to clean up some old records and what's happened is people have destroyed them and didn't notify us. And then when we go back to do the reappraisal, we'll find that, oh, they're not there and all you see is a chassis or the tongue's left or something and nothing's left of them.
I think...
And they get, they get damaged in windstorms. I was hoping they'd roll into the Shute County, but...
Well, a lot of them are meeting their life expectancy as we're going to continue to see these type of things.
Yes, and we're, we're trying to clean them up as we come to them. Dave Knowles is doing an awesome job up there and...
So we have two petitions for tomorrow to make sure.
Yes, one is for, just strictly for the abandonment process because it is totally, it's a different procedure. And to attach to the abandonment process, if there's a document, he submitted copies of his notices and I just attached as well so that you can see that he did follow protocol on those.
So just so I'm sure, I have two petitions. I don't see, one is, talks about the abandonment.
Uh huh.
But the petitions are the same.
One's abandonment and the other one has several pages attached to it. Deal inventory destroyed.
Okay, so the attachments is what shows the abandonment.
Uh huh, yes.
The petitions are the same, okay.
Yes, the petitions are the same and the, the reasonings for the writing off the taxes.
Got it.
Is they're different ones.
Any questions?
Nope. Thanks, Georgia.
Thank you so much. I'm sure Greg started us cleaned up, Georgia.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too.
Bye bye.
Okay. Is there anything I've missed on the... Department updates and these, oh, we have department updates. Nobody got on for department updates today.
They did, no.
Okay. Please, on updates. You want me to kick it off? I'll, I certainly do, I'll kick it off. Been working with our landfill manager, Rick D'Amelio, along with the conceptual thought that Commissioner Shown came up with. I've been working with DEQ to look at, try and get a small landfill, landfill exemption to build and move our landfill. I've made great progress on that, Rick and I've worked on that. DEQ's working with us, had a conference call last week with them. Have a draft, they have a draft letter together of some avenues. Well, you guys have all got CC's letter, so I'm just reiterating, you already know of a process that could take place for us to consider that. There may be some discussion tomorrow in our meeting with Linda Hayes-Forman in our public meeting to talk about that a little bit, but very excited about that. And I'm sure both of you have worked on it individually a little bit.
A little bit.
Yeah, so that's, that alone, if we're able to get there. We've already extended the years of the landfill over what was slated for closure. And so if we're able to do this, and I have to give kudos to Commissioner Shown coming up with the idea. I'm just the one that had the connections to work with DEQ.
Just for the audience, can I give a little synopsis of what the action of...
Absolutely. What we have is a landfill that's been there for many years. And many years ago, our landfill, there was a contamination of the groundwater. And so we're under very strict guidelines of not being able to make a bigger landfill with outliners and several different large costs to the citizens of our county. For, before my time, whenever the landfill charging, charging to dump the landfill came on in the closure of all the outlined landfills, it was very contentious. It's been 3.5 cents, 3.5 cents a pound, $70 a ton for, I want to say 16 or 17 years. We as commissioners, past and present, have been on keep those prices down to our constituents out there so that it doesn't cost them a whole bunch just because of their municipal waste and their domestic waste. With that, the landfill met its life expectancy and we have been able to extend that by going with the CND pit, construction demolition. We've been able to push every avenue we can, worked well with DEQ. We're right there at that point with the next couple of years that we would have to transfer it out. When you transfer it out, the costs go a whole bunch. Liner, just the cost of the liner alone, last we knew was a million dollars plus. That's not including the compliance that you have to go with the runoff and capture of the water and other things that go along with it. So going up gradient where that there's higher ground and looking at the difference in the depth of the soil compared to the groundwater, it makes common sense to build, move up gradient on our own property that we're already owned. We have 100 acres out there. So that conceptual thought was brought forward and it gained momentum. And we're, we're there, we're talking. And we have some, some ideas, might be able to make that work and DEQ is working with us well. So very encouraged. What this means is, is that our citizens, hopefully we can keep that cost down or that the cost per ton, per pound is kept at a very low rate. So could extend the landfill for many, many years without huge costs. There will be costs, there's going to be costs in this, the closure of the old landfill, monitoring wells, on and on. But we're hopeful to be able to keep it at a minimum. It's a very positive thing.
It's a better alternative than to have to haul it out.
Yep.
And as you said, Commissioner, just to jump in there since we're talking to the audience, that this is where it's being proposed, where you met with DEQ out there and looked at it years just a short while back, is probably where it should have been to start with.
Absolutely, absolutely. So anyways...
We're fortunate to have that, some odd acres to be able to ship and expand our operation.
Yep, and so that's very good.
I won't be here tomorrow, but give Linda my regards, she's a great lady.
Okay, I will. Executive Board for Area Committee on Transportation, we met last week in Clamath, last Friday in Clamath. A lot of discussion about the STIP process. And I know you guys are tired hearing about the STIP process, but we're, we're still pushing that it needs to be, go towards the thicket, fix it, the state transportation improvement plan in federal dollars or other dollars that could come down. We're talking year 2019 through 21 in a process to bill allocate those STIP dollars. We still, we're all in agreement that that needs to go towards fix it. Maybe keep a small bucket of money to leverage dollars for enhancement. Enhancement would be new construction. Fix it would be get out on there, fix potholes, do the preservation work and that. So we're staying with that. I did take quite a bit of time to talk about 140, 395, and 31. Now, since Bligh Mountain is in, under construction and it's going to take the link through restrictions off of that. And I'm really pushing for, for their freight plan to take into consideration these other routes out here, these little volume highways. And for the freight plan, we've always tagged 97 as our number one priority between Lake and Clamath Counties Act with Highway 1 being, 140 being number two. But in the freight plan, they need to get with the trucking industry and find out what does it really mean if the trucking industry is able to come over 140, 395 up to 97 and put that in the freight plan. But I'm pushing very hard on that. But I'm pushing very hard on that with acceptance and with support. With that.
And someday we might need to loop around like you.
We, we can only hope. So I will be off Thursday, here the rest of the week.
I'll be here all week.
You're in charge. That's enough, my leave.
This is usually in charge when she's in the young.
Either one of you?
Yeah, just as a tenth reminder, I will be at the Land Part Leadership Council meeting, face-to-face meeting, right at the tail end of March, first part of April in DC. The issue that I spoke of earlier on the sage grouse, fire protection side of things related to fire and other types of mitigation, Joe Sutler's writing that segment for the National Committee. He's one of the few folks in the West that's involved in that and he's been working with Judge Grassley when I related to the fire side of it with me and Judge Grassley with the sage grouse, just in general issues. We've had conference calls and exchanged a lot of meeting materials or webinar materials that he's been doing and working on. Joe's, he's doing a really good job of the Secretary's order at a very tight timeframe, so.
Joe Sutler is a retired Forest Service, he's with the Shute County now?
Mm-hmm. And Joe also is the co-chair of the Western Region of the Co-BC Strategy Committee Group and Joe will be back there with me at the Woodflick, the Y-Y Land Part Leadership Council meeting. And I am concerned about, you know, the potential impacts, but we've got to kind of let this roll out. We don't know, but all indications are that it's something we should be aware of as far as the fire suppression resources go. In the discussion with Connie, we've been trying, we've been playing tag as, as it relates to getting a day to make a, what I would call a figure eight loop, that's what I'm proposing to go out and look at forest roads, forest recreation areas for signing, et cetera, because as we look at recreation opportunities in our county, we probably have some priorities or the agency does and we need to be cognizant of, as I asked her, where we might be able to help in coming up with resources to help them do what they want to do and need to do related to those, at least those three areas, not just the forest issues, but the, the forest use issues. So we'll get that scheduled here one of these days. But had a little bit of a conversation with Joe Villagrana and Martin Murphy last Thursday on this Sheewalk-in or Sheewalk-in watershed group getting together. And I understand Commissioner Kessner is on that and wasn't able to attend and just wanted to get some clarification. They, more or less, they indicated or asked the question if I was going to be involved and I said, well, there won't be two commissioners. And if Commissioner Kessner had been approached by someone else, then that's just fine, just so long as we have someone there. Because they had a rather large meeting that sounded like they, I think they projected forty or so folks in attendance and starting the, the process of how they're going to deal with or address the water issues up there, so.
I have been engaged in that with the Abert Lake going dry last year and that, I would say, not so professional news coverage. Environmental group is looking at water rates and delivery of that water to Abert Lake. That's a new mission. They'd be looking for a river's end and then they'd be going upstream on the diversions and water rates. And the meeting I was, wasn't able to attend was, but I'll back up. There was this one PhD postal dear candidate that's kind of heading up a workshop, he says, to discuss what we do out there. And they extended invitations to various folks. And what this initial group had met basically last week is mostly for everybody to get all the information factually so that any of them participating in the workshop or being interviewed, they all have the same information and factual information instead of kind of objective or whatever. But they've been working with Brian and Water Master, living on to, basically, going out about some issues on what people want in the state. That Abert Lake have gone dry over the eons, many times. It's an actual process, but it's a radical call to some folks and we need to be prepared for it.
Well, I, I think, Commissioner, I think the, the water issues are going to keep coming, you know, unattended to the surface. I, I did receive a call last night myself, not about the Sheewalk-in, but about in-stream Oregon Department of Fish and Water, water rates and concerned person, I'll get off, it's time to talk with Brian, you're the lead on water rights and you're the lead on the water. I think the water is going to be there in the Sheewalk-in, you think, with the water rights. I know that I didn't intend to meet you on the West Side Water issues, I don't know if you've got the opportunity, but I think we're going to be, be asked to be vocal and a part of solution to water issues.
We're going into a drought scenario within infrastructure. When it's going to relieve itself or not is uncertain, but you're right, water would be a hot topic, always been, but it's.
Only at the surface. Which one of you are, are the?
Well, I was.
You are?
Yeah, we need to talk about that.
I stand corrected.
No, we need to talk about that too, some of our, our proposed liaisons. I wasn't quite through with my liaison update, so.
Okay, well, I don't know which one of you mentioned you stayed.
Well, we cross over our liaison, I mean.
Yeah, but I, I do believe that the water thing is going to be, just after being received the call last night, I think it's just, the people start to be pretty concerned.
Yeah.
Pretty concerned, so.
Well, my concern with bringing this whole thing up was that somehow we can communicate with each other because since I live in Paisley and we're countywide commissioners, you know, living there has a little more emphasis, especially where I have family that has a ranch, a lot of friends that have a ranch. I would have went ahead and went up, but I defer, and that's what I told Joe, you know, Commissioner Kessner was asked by somebody to be involved in this, so I'm not trying to step in, but let me know next time that, that there's not going to be someone, pretend it's not you, well, yes, you, Commissioner, but that's what I was telling Joe. I said, I would have been glad to have came, I wouldn't have been as up to date on what all had been discussed, but just, just so we can close that loop in the future.
It doesn't hurt a bit. The controversy of two, two commissioners attending the meeting, we do it all the time. Meet and greet with a senior person, whatever, you just don't interact to deliberate.
Yeah.
In those scenarios. I've got a couple of things. Tomorrow, that CCAA, the Candidate Conservation Agreement with Assurance, it's a US Fish and Wildlife Service program working with ranchers and landowners who, in their agreement, law of species is still a candidate, not after it's listed, to have some assurance of what they can do on their sage grouse property. That was destined for a, a big signing ceremony in Portland back in February thirteenth, but other, other good things came about. So it's being rescheduled for June tour tomorrow. Oh, yeah, Wednesday. What's kind of odd, but not too odd, in that it's in the center of the sage grouse habitat.
So do we, we have any ranchers that's signing on to that? That's in Lake County? I know, I thought there might be someone, Marty, but.
But lots in Harney County, a fair member in Lake County and other counties with sage grouse. It's working with Justin Farrow, now that's the Ag Center.
So is water, I'm sure.
Yeah. It's been a big push to get landowners that own the sage grouse habitat to come on board. It's a voluntary agreement, they can back out anytime, but if they haunt it and the sage grouse does get listed as threatened, they've already got that agreement with the Fish and Wildlife Service that they can do some modification of sage grouse without being penalized.
Is that US, there's one like the rest Asian?
So, so tomorrow signing, Lake County ranchers there to sign on?
I'm sure they'll come and keep doing that. But it's, it's been a many months ongoing thing and it's, it's more of a ceremonial thing. But Justin asked, Ken, because I've been engaged in that so much. Immediately following that on Thursday, this LCD, Land Conservation Development State Office have initiated, and this has been ongoing for some time, it came out of the Sage Con group of the governors. How do we address our county planning process that will assure the US Fish and Wildlife Service that there are local regulatory mechanisms, because that was one of the two things identified in potential. One is habitat loss, the other is lack of, in regulations to maintain habitat. So Darwin and I have been heavily engaged on with the LCD. And at first we was looking at maybe modifying our gold fight, like the land use plan for, for special resources, like direct winter rains and so forth. But it got elevated up to the state writing some rules that the county would have. So Judge Grassley and I have been engaged in that to make sure that their rules are fair, just kind of more of a guidance instead of a straight hammer on our land use plan process.
I thought, I thought that most of the counties weren't going to accept anything until the map were read.
The map is on the table, both Darwin, I, we haven't got there yet. That is one of the things that we've had the table discussing is a map.
It's not a good map. I'm trying to stay politically correct.
Along with that, in talking to Judge Grassley, he sent out that email, part of your last meeting in Pineville, had all these questions. He said after the meeting, he called me that night, pretty frustrated because he said, none of that was addressed. Is there any reason the state or the group didn't address any of it?
That first meeting was just a kickoff, now we get down to the bare knuckles of debating and negotiating. Where at the same time, ODA, WDA, State Fish and Wildlife Department have initiated their own rulemaking and I've been mainly pressed to be on that. And it's essential to add the LCD rulemaking and the State Fish and Wildlife rulemaking to mirror and be consistent, because you get two agencies thinking in their own world, they're going to be a mess. So there's, this meeting's going to go on probably until April, about once a month, until we can get things hammered out. Warren and Steve called once, I wasn't probably prepared for the Pineville because it was sent out on Friday night or something. I don't text while I drive, but I was trying to read them while I was driving. Because they're done that.
Yeah.
But that, that first meeting was a kickoff and Steve was frustrated. And, but the future meeting is to get down to that, the brass knuckles. And we're going to have a, have to June tour tomorrow, then drive back to Burns. The meeting starts on Thursday, go full afternoon and then continue the next day until then, so it'll be Friday afternoon before we get back. On this BTP working group between the BTP Racing Association and Honda, that we've been kind of sitting in, most of the referees, that, again, that birds, not so much what's going on there because the group haven't made their final decision, but there's going to be a shift on that. It was opening up, almost everybody, we had people coming in from this environmental group, people coming in from that, I'm not sure who invited them all, but they had, some of them had some very good input. But the large group wasn't going anywhere. And that's just, the last meeting we had is to get the two sponsors, which is Honda and, and the BTP Racing Association to just get down and hammer out agreement if they want, if it goes into place. And my position all along is folks to stay at the table. I was out, I've always had this little thing back in my mind that Honda have always been pushing for some destination out there and if we're not at the table, we're going to give up the gift. In fact, I was out talking to Todd Forbes, the area manager, real admin, about San Hollow, he's helping back up. We talked about that at Wood and he said he'll, we can hold Mark Williamson, come up with some agreement for that San Hollow move. But he also mentioned that Honda's constantly backed in DC, pushing their heart, shouting greater ecosystem estimation. And he actually said there was one positive note. His particular secretary said Honda stops suing our agencies and let them do the job. So that gives a little flick of where she may, the secretary may be at. But it's, it's going to be fun games for a while. On that letter we wrote to Sally Jills, the same secretary a while back on horses and ranching families, I've been kind of amazed that we haven't gotten a response yet. Todd told me he finally, it goes from the secretary to director to state office and that back to area office for response. He only received it last week. But it's interesting that it took so long, means that they took it seriously. When I went out to the BTP Racing Association meeting, the week ago Monday, they were trying to decide what avenue to take. And a phrase came up that I hadn't heard about, sage grouse focus areas, destination. I have no idea what that was. One person said, oh, that's a new destination, dah dah dah. What we have is one of the best sage grouse habitats in BTP. It is one of the best in the United States, in the western United States. So it's high on the Secretary Interior and Department of Fish and Wildlife Service focus. And they recognize that horses, too many horses, I say wild, feral horses, is a big threat to the sage grouse habitat. And I've got my fingers crossed in that it may not happen this year, but maybe next year, we have some rest solution to the wild horses, maybe down, coming down because of the sage grouse.
That'll be good.
Because at this time, it's due to the horses and the drought, the Racing Association can, they have a program for twenty-five thousand AUMs. They rarely ever get that much, usually about fifteen thousand. We're going to have only four thousand this year. And they have to be off by the first of June, which doesn't make it worth a lot if you put cows out there, especially if they had to haul a lot of water to dirt tanks. And good, may I mention about Paisley broadband?
Hey, yes.
Thank you for, Ginger's been working very, to help facilitate broadband to Paisley and to the school particularly, because the school is coming up, the seniors have to take this test on the computer and only got one shot at it. And I understand from Ginger that the school has broadband, very happy with it. So one down and two or three more to go.
When I talked to them, they said they have a lot less time for coffee. It's fast.
Anyway, that's it.
Any more?
No.
Okay, I don't know where tomorrow's agenda is real fast, I mentioned it, DEQ will be here tomorrow. Ken, you're going to be gone. here tomorrow. Ken, you're going to be gone. There are some major decisions to be made tomorrow from courthouse, office space, proposal, other things. Is there anything that you have questions or?
No, I'm comfortable with you too. On courthouse, office space, as long as Denise has placed curtains in her office.
Okay. My, my, my priorities are a little different.
Yeah, internet and electricity and all.
Okay. So I encourage you to look at the, the spec sheet on that because of if we approve this tomorrow, that's approving dollars to be spent. I have no idea how much those dollars are at this time of night. Hate to approve something that I don't have no idea how much it's going to cost to do.
Well, I think Commissioner, just to take a step back, in the spec sheet, I think I could get a clarification. What you're talking about has been through the building official for approval or looksy, make sure.
Sure.
Well, everything, the electric, everything. But more importantly, it's just a request for quotes. It's not a, we're going to have to approve the expenditure when it comes forward. We're, we're not, there's nobody that's bid on it, so we're not approving that.
It's not for, it's, it's an RFQ, not an RFP. I thought it was an RFP. That would change my whole.
But normally we discuss money during the contract.
Request for proposals. And what I read was instead of this is desire to contract to construct office space and exit stairs by the specs that Lake County provides for the library. They'll put, locate, it's what the, what it is.
I'm trying to see it on here. Oh, here it is. Request for proposals.
That's what.
Well, with the technical terms, proposals and quotes, et cetera, et cetera. What I'm presuming, we can get that cleared up from today and tomorrow, is that we would be approving going out and receiving proposals with quotes attached and it'll come back to us as to whether or not we're going to approve that. So by whatever action we take tomorrow, I don't think we're tying a steady money expenditures since we all know what they are until we get the votes back.
Okay. Sounds good. Any?
Anything new on Red Rock?
Only what I read in the paper this morning. And I hate to quote anything unless I get information from the developers. So read the paper. The, the paper alludes to that there is an investor secured for a part of it. So that's about all I know at this point.
I attended the DEQ thing last week.
Oh, yes. Give us an update.
They had, Larry Cockens couldn't be there. He was vacationing. But the West DC Regional Eastern Region Manager and he's the one that writes the permit. And he went over all the, he has to take from the developer what they're going to propose, what their estimated pollutants and emissions. And he had all that. And so where the standard is and how all those fail and I mean, there's two that's real close.
But they're still under the standard.
Yeah. And we had a couple of posts, so had some good questions and he answered them in a very professional. It was a good meeting.
Good.
It was mostly just information. As things come in, it will be a person writing. And then once you get all the stuff that's needed, then he'll have a public hearing.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that update. We will recess until one o'clock.